Clock turns six thirty and I can see that we have a quorum. So I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up for on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our ten nineteen twenty twenty one meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any corrections or questions regarding the minutes? Is there a way to get Barney up a little better so I can?
Oh, yeah, we can.
See him?
Yep.
There you go. Welcome, Councilman McCarty.
Thank you.
So. Did you have any questions or corrections to the minutes, sir?
No, I said, no, I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. So hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Garing moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will now move on to approval of vouchers. Today, our vouchers total three hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars, fifty-six cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Oh, that's head shaking. Can I get a head shake? Thank you. Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will now move on to our first public comment section, Mr. Styles.
So if there's anyone in the public who wants to make a comment, thank you. And Phil, if you wanted to make a comment, you can unmute at this point.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any public comments at this time. We might get some later. Uh, next item up is the annual update. Uh, on the Kansas Power Pool and today we have Mr. Mark Chesney, general manager of the Kansas Power Pool here with us in person, live. Mr. Chesney.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Good to see you again. I did want to come and give you a bit of a, maybe a clarification type update on the Kansas Power Pool. I'm going to be brief. I know you always have an agenda you're working through. Hey, by the way, before I do that, I think I'd just like to put a happy face on the fact that the city of Hillsborough responded very well to KDP's encouragement that a bit, a bit more be done to elevate public power awareness. First full week in October, Public Power Week all over the country. And you all, Brooke knows better than I do, but you had events and you submitted photographs and you had a proclamation and that's just fantastic. We, we, she tells me that twenty-four of our twenty, excuse me, twenty-one, twenty-one of our twenty-four members really, really pushed the envelope and that's just thrilling. I, here's a statistic that I think is just very nearly unbelievable, but I can assure you, it's been very well researched and carefully studied across the country where municipal electric utilities are found. One in five, one in five citizens know and we've been scratching our heads about that for a couple of years and felt like, you know, we just, we really can do more to elevate awareness if we just will. And, and you did, and we really, we would really want to recognize that and express appreciation for that. But anyway, let me just tell you, I think all of you know this and Mayor Lou no doubt has, has kept you informed on this, but but our annual rate form is this Friday, this coming Friday, that's where we do a deep dive into all of the drivers associated with, with electric cost pricing. And so we're going to do that again. People want to know, well, golly, what's that going to look like? This, this has, if you're an electric utility and you are, this has been really, a really challenging year. You don't need me to tell you that. You know that. It has been, the forward price on natural gas, I mean, we've been saying for about five years that the natural gas price is level, it's level, it's level. It's no longer level. And, and that can be explained, but the fact is, it isn't. And so I'm very, very sure. As a matter of fact, the budget just got finalized this afternoon. It's in my inbox to be reviewed. We're going to see some bumps for twenty twenty-two, but, but in, in twenty twenty-three, there is a remarkable cost decrease. I mean, truly remarkable because the Jeffrey Energy Center contract goes away. We've been saying for five years now that, that is multiple millions of dollars that, as compared to what we are paying Evergy today, that we will not be paying when that contract goes away. And so there, there's something absolutely to look forward to, but we got to get through twenty twenty-two first.
Mark, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it might bear, bear elaborating a little bit on when you say Jeffrey Energy, what we are talking about specifically because I think that resonates with people if they, if they don't understand what that means.
Yeah, well, you know, and I just, I get into autopilot and I just, thank you. Almost ten years ago, we signed, not a, not a power purchase contract with Evergy, but we signed a participation agreement with Evergy for their Jeffrey Energy Center, which is a coal complex just north of St. Mary's. And, you know, at the time, that was our least cost resource in our portfolio. And it is absolutely the most expensive in our portfolio today. I mean, that's what coal has done. It's expensive to run coal units because you can't bring them up and down as the electric loads go up and down. You take them up and you leave them there. And so there's, it's just not efficient. Not since combined cycle became perfected and of course renewables, renewables are absolutely putting downward pressure on the spot, spot price of electricity. But that participation agreement with, at the time, Westar, now Evergy, it was a ten-year instrument. And it comes to an end at the end of twenty twenty-two. You know, a lot of people in this country really, really applaud the fact that the utilities are getting out of the coal industry. And it has a social component to it, absolutely, but the truth of the matter is it is purely economic getting out of that. There's, there's just, there's no question about it. And so we've got this plan that we've been talking about for a few years and installing a quick start engines that literally sink into the grid like that. Well, less than, not, not like that, but less than five minutes. A coal plant from a cold start comes up in about eighteen hours. And even combined cycle ramps up to sink into the grid in about twenty minutes. But renewable wind and solar goes offline very quickly. And so the question becomes, how are you going to back that up? And so we feel really, really good about our power supply plan. So I'm kind of branching off into a bigger discussion.
That's, that's, that answers the question.
Thank you. Yeah, that's Jeffrey. And so we're looking forward to the expiration of that in December, on December thirty-first of next year, twenty twenty-two. The, the budget will be formally presented to the board of directors in December after members have had thirty days to look at it, thirty days following this Friday. And the, according to our governing documents, the, the board of directors will approve the budget. And if they approve the budget, they will recommend approval of the rates from which the budget is, is, or is the rates are built from the budget, obviously. The members approve the rates. And so that, that'll happen in December, but, but this rate forum on Friday is a big event for us and some of you will be there. I know you will and we appreciate that. But, you know, I always like to just keep it less than five minutes if I can, but hey, if there are questions, other questions, I'd be delighted to try to tackle them. Maybe there's something irrelevant to what I've already talked about that, if you want to pose to me.
Will the natural gas increase in twenty twenty-two make the coal more? Like that coal plant more effective?
Yeah. That's already been true in the last, you know, ninety days that coal units have run more than, than previously because of that very thing. But, you know, I mean, on the, on the balance scale, I mean, it still doesn't make any sense to stay in that industry or in that, as that is, as a, as a part of our mix. But yeah, the strict answer to your question is yes, it is. You know, we don't think we're going to do nuclear. And, and we just, we really don't think we want to do more renewable. There's just an incredible amount of, I mean, you know this, so that there, the, the amount of renewables that are already in place is just mind boggling. But the fact is, in, in the next five-year queue, there's lots of renewables and then the production tax credit and investment tax credit, that's going to be re-up and you're going to see more. And our philosophy is there's got to be something that will back up those resources. And so we're feeling really, really good about the plan that we have. Anything else I can answer?
I'd just like to say as a, as a, as a member, a board member of the Kansas Power Pool, that it wasn't until, you know, I really got involved as, not only as mayor, but as, as a member of the board when Larry went off and you, you folks asked me to, to become a board member, that I really understood the forward thinking that has gone on in the Kansas Power Pool over the years. And we saw that play out in several ways recently. And the most, most recent was Winter Storm Yuri, when the foresight of the Kansas Power Pool and previous boards of directors had put in place a rate stabilization fund that allowed us to pay our bills when a lot of other utilities were being stretched or even unable to pay their bills. And, you know, that's a credit to, to the Kansas Power Pool, to, to its leadership under Mark's predecessor, but certainly under Mark's leadership. It's positioned us to be in a great place going forward. But things change. And I mean, as Mark said, you know, in ten years, ten years ago, that, that coal agreement looked like the really smart thing to do and it was at the time. But things change and priorities have to shift. And the Kansas Power Pool has proven itself to be nimble enough to pivot and move in the directions that are important for its members to help them keep their costs of power down. And they've done a great job of that and I'm proud to be a member of the, of the board of directors. And I'm extremely proud that my predecessors had the foresight to, to be part of, become part of the Kansas Power Pool many years ago.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Lou. And you, you've been, you've had a great voice and I've said that to you privately and I say it publicly, we appreciate your help. Because we do have issues from time to time, all utilities do, to work through. You've been very helpful. I thank you for the comment.
Well, you're, you're welcome and thank you for, for that as well. We have a little something extra that we'd like to add on now that you've finished with your, your presentation. And I have here in, in my hands a proclamation that I'd like to read. This is a proclamation to the city of Hillsborough, Kansas. Whereas the city of Hillsborough's mission is to provide reliable, affordable electricity to all the residents and businesses within the community. And whereas the city of Hillsborough is a long-term member of the Kansas Power Pool and values the high-quality service and support that the pool provides the city. And whereas the Kansas Power Pool has been under the leadership of Mark Chesney as the CEO, general manager since two thousand twelve, leading the organization through many challenges and growth. And whereas Mark Chesney has chosen to retire from his distinguished career as a public power leader in Oklahoma, Utah, and Kansas. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Hillsborough formally honor Mark Chesney for his outstanding career in the power industry, his leadership of the Kansas Power Pool, and the impact his teams have had on the daily lives for Hillsborough businesses and citizens. The mayor and the council do hereby proclaim their appreciation for Mark Chesney and do confer upon him honorary citizenship and the key to the city of Hillsborough on this day, Tuesday, November second, two thousand twenty-one. The city of Hillsborough sincerely appreciates Mark's contributions to the betterment of all that call Hillsborough home. Mark, can we get a picture?
Well, golly, thank you.
And, and we also have a little bit, the, the key to the city, the honorary citizenship. We have some things that go with that and those are right here. And so in this, we have a variety of Hillsborough items. We have some minnow beans coffee. We have some Hillsborough sausage. We've got some weeby cheese. We've got some CSI honey, Barkman honey, CSI bottles. And we've got some Granny's mustard and some seasoning. And here's that key to the city. So Mark, thank you for all you've done.
Well, you are more than welcome, I promise you, but I, I didn't.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to miss you, but again, we so much appreciate what you've done for us and, and the place and the way that you left the Kansas Power Pool in position to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to everybody. And I, this, this man knows that when I get going, sometimes it's hard to shut me. But at this moment, I am speechless, I promise you that. But thank you. Thanks. Thanks very much. So touching. My wife is going to, she's going to come to tears when she sees that. I know she is. Okay, well, I'm going to let you do your business and thank you and I'll see you on Friday.
Yeah, you will.
Some probably Matt and some others, but golly, thanks very much.
You're very welcome.
Very nice. Okay, all right.
All right. Travel safe, my friend.
I need some help. I'm going to need help probably. I'm kidding. I'm going to put on my jacket.
All right. So we actually moved into our proclamation. But I apologize for rolling there. The next item up, we're into our business section is appointment of Andrew Kovar as city attorney, Mr. Styles.
So we have attached, we have resignation, Kimberly Gilchrist, who's been serving as our city attorney for the last almost year now. She took a different position and so she left Triple Wilf and Garrettson effective the end of the, end of the month, end of October. And so we've been talking with Triplet and, and they have offered Andrew services. And Andrew is a well-experienced city attorney, has worked with us on numerous bond issues as, as on that side of the house, but also served in city attorney in Kechai and a couple of other places. So we're welcoming him to the team if, if you see fit to do so. According to our contract of what we worked out with them, everything will remain the same with them. But we just would welcome Andrew to replace Kimberly in the city attorney.
Is that, is that a require official action?
Does require official action.
So the appointment is in front of you to appoint Andrew Kovar as the city attorney for the city of Hillsborough. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve Mr. Kovar's appointment.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four oh. Andrew, welcome. Thank you. We're so glad to have you. Thank you.
I just want to let everybody know, as Mr. Styles said, I've been working with the firm and as bond counsel for the city of Hillsborough for the past fourteen, almost fifteen years. So I have a lot of experience with the city. I've always liked coming out here and I'm really excited to get to work with you on a more detailed level. So thank you very much.
Thanks for taking us on.
Absolutely.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is, is affirmation of chief of police appointment, Mr. Styles.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Uh, yeah, so first I want to thank Councilman McCarty and Councilman Lowen for helping with the interview process. We interviewed two candidates. We had two internal people that we took, took a look at and both were excellent, eminently qualified people. After our deliberation, we kind of came to the consensus that Jesse Hebert would be our, our choice to move forward as the next chief of police for the city of Hillsborough. A little background, Jesse's been here, obviously y'all probably know Jesse, been here since nineteen ninety-three when he started as a reserve officer. Turned into a full-time appointment back in ninety-seven and then were canine handler, sergeant, assistant chief, done a little bit of everything in this department. So been appointed assistant chief in two thousand and three, has been there ever since and learning the ropes from all of our people and serving in that capacity for eighteen years. So we're really excited to have Jesse come forward with us and we're just, there's no actual motion that needs to happen here. It's just an affirmation. So we wanted to bring that to everybody's attention that this is kind of what we're wanting to do. And I give Jesse an opportunity to introduce himself as the chief of police.
First of all, I appreciate your confidence in me and the promotion. I definitely look forward to serving Hillsborough in this capacity. I mean, I've been looking forward to it for a long time. It's that top rung on that career ladder and I'm grateful that it's happening here. So look forward to some new things in the department to continue on with what we have now and maybe push a little different direction in positive manner. Open door policy. If any of you guys want to get with me, suggestions, concerns, reach out direct. Mayor and Matt, obviously you're aware of that. So don't, don't think twice about reaching out direct to me if you have anything you want to discuss. So just thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
First thing, Jesse, you're going to need a new shirt.
There's a, there's a lot of things that have that stitched into it, but yeah.
Get a Sharpie if you need.
I might, I might be doing that for a while. It takes a while to get a shirt made. So I am grateful. Thank you very much. So.
Well, it's exciting and, and I'm excited to, to see you take this next step and, and looking forward to, to what you're going to bring to the department. So we'll just, we'll just stay tuned. How's that?
That sounds great. That sounds great. Thank you.
Off to work now.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item up is consideration of job description of sanitation operator, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So with Ed Rickard, who left the city, retired last month, yeah, I guess so. I'm trying to figure out my dates here. We've kind of, we've had an open position and traditionally streets and sanitation have been put together. What I would like to do is pull those back apart a little bit and have somebody dedicated specifically for sanitation with that open position. We've got a lot of things that we could be doing that are customer service based, but also preventative maintenance that really isn't getting done at this point. There's a lot of things with dumpsters and things that need to be upgraded and just changing out wheels and doing basic maintenance stuff that we really haven't had time to do in, in the current structure. So what I'm asking to do is to move the, to, to create and approve the sanitation position job to fill the position that Ed had vacated. And then in the process, I'd also move David Lockwood up. It's a supervisor for this position. He's our current trash driver. I think it would do a lot of things for us, including giving us a dedicated backup driver. And if there's situations where we have a lot of commercial things, after holiday is a great example, we'd have a second person who can go out there and run the truck pretty effectively. I think we'd be money ahead by, by doing a little bit more preventative maintenance and some of our stuff. And so just asking for permission and approval for this job description today.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to, to approve the job description and of sanitation driver and authorize the city administrator to fill that position at his discretion.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Garing moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four oh. We have a couple Elcon, or some Elcon invoices, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So these are related to the water treatment plant, which is sort of where we've been spending quite a bit of time. Changed out a few receptacles there and there's some time for master electrician on that one for a hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. And then we also had some more stuff with the water treatment plant again, a second time around with some more replacements things that had to be done there. Trouble shooting items. And that one ended up being eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-six cents for a total of nine hundred and
Ninety-three forty-six.
Forty-six.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the two Elcon invoices for payment.
Moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Abstain.
We have motion carry, three S, one abstention. And now we have the additional item on the agenda today, which is our city prosecutor appointment, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we're filling a lot of positions today. You may have known that Susan Robinson took a position as a district court judge. So she's no longer able to serve in the capacity for us as city prosecutor. She actually did court today, which was her last day with us and will be taking the bench at the end of the month. So what we did was start looking around for some additional, somebody with some Hillsborough roots to, to fill in for us as the city prosecutor. We contacted a couple of firms, but Adrian and Pankrantz had the most interest in doing that. And so what we've got is a letter there sent from one of the partners, Tim Hodge, who is, I don't know, he's not a native to Hillsborough, but grew up here a lot of times, spent a lot of time here, went to Tabor, taught at Tabor. And they're, they're requesting or submitting themselves as an applicant to fill that position. It won't actually be Tim though, it would be one of his other partners in the, in the firm who would do most of that. And Tim would serve as a backup. It would be Joel Olman, who's got a little bit more prosecutor, prosecutorial experience. So what we're asking for here, well, I guess I should say that the, their, their price is a little bit more expensive, twenty-five dollars more an hour. It's roughly ten hours a month, give or take. So the price difference doesn't end up terribly more. Barney's got his dog going. So what we're requesting then is to approve, approve the engagement letter with Adrian and Pankrantz and per, appointing Joel Olman as the city prosecutor.
So Barney, has, has your dog got some concerns?
Well, anybody walk by the house or a cat, he barks at.
Well, there you go. Okay, any questions regarding the, the appointment of Adrian and Pankratz to see, to the prosecutor? Okay, hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the proposed engage, the signing, the approach signing, the approving and signing the proposed engagement letter from Adrian and Pankratz and appointing Joel Olman as our city prosecutor.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now into agenda item G category, which is items for future consideration. And Mr. Styles, if you would just explain a little bit what, what we're doing here.
Yeah, so thank you, sir. One of the things that we've talked about, at least the mayor and I have talked about and we talked about at the last meeting was moving to a situation where we can kind of review things in a two-step process to avoid unintended consequences and give you guys a little more time to chew on things that are a little bit more complicated. And so what we've got here, or how we've set it up today was to propose two things that we would want you to look at for a future meeting, potentially the next meeting or a meeting down the line, to give you an opportunity to digest some of those things and a little bit more time to, to review those and, and for the public to also review some of those things. So that's the intention of that item. And the first thing on there is the public comment policy, which we talked about at the last meeting. So we've got some, some things lined out there about kind of how we would do this, how we would kind of give a little bit more structure to our public comment periods. We require people to sign up and have, you know, the normal type of limits on people speaking and giving a little bit more structure, I guess would be the right word to that and give it a little bit more form as to how we do that. It also puts in there some decorum things that we do not have a problem with people getting unruly. It also puts in there some decorum things that we do not have a problem with people getting unruly. But that's not really an issue, but if you did have an issue or something would happen, people can come on court pretty quick anymore. And so having those rules in place beforehand can be helpful to managing when you have actual people doing public comments. You know, it talks about responses to public comments, that people shouldn't expect a direct and immediate response to give us some time to process some of those things. What can happen if someone is, isn't willing to, to comply with our rules? And then providing some accommodation for individuals with disabilities. So that's the comment, the public comment policy. And I also put in there some suggestions, and it's potentially looking at a consent agenda, if that's something you want to do. That can help streamline some things in there, so there's, there's verbiage about that. And then also the items of consideration process where we, you know, take this two-step thing, where we look at things a little bit more complicated in a two-step manner, so.
So then it would just be kind of that discretion if we did them in one meeting or if we needed two meetings?
Yeah, I kind of, there, there are some things that we can't do that with, but for things like this, for example, policy or ordinances that aren't time sensitive, you could definitely have, have that two-step process and say, okay, we're gonna talk about it. It's sort of like in the Roberts Rules of Order, it's a first reading kind of approach where you get to look at it first, think about it, and vote on it in a different meeting, so.
One of the things that kind of, two things really that brought this up, one was the recent situation we had with the solar ordinance, where we had some unintended consequences that came up. The other is, you know, at the league meeting and listening to other mayors talk about issues that come up in their meetings and, you know, we're fortunate as a community that we don't have a lot of contentiousness, generally speaking, but there are things in, in life that, that can create that. And, and, you know, if we're trying to be as transparent as we can be and we're trying to give people an opportunity to participate in the process, I see this as a good move in that direction.
So again, there's no required action today, we're just bringing this to you as, as something to, to look at and using it as a two-step process, right? We're actually using it as a, yes.
It's the Hillsborough two-step, not the Texas two-step.
So that, that is the first, first item there.
Okay. Any questions about this direction or comments, you know, and certainly we can take two steps to, to elicit comments on that from the council too. So. Okay, let's move on to the second item.
Okay, so building code update, one of the things that we need to do, well, we should look at doing, I think it's best practice to do, is update our additions of the International Building Code and all the associated fire, plumbing, mechanical, fuel, gas, and residential codes, these are things that they, they, they change them every so often. Actually, they put out an addition every two years, I believe. And it's been kind of the practice of the city to, to wait for us a, a couple additions before you adopt one. We're currently under the twenty twelve. And it's one of those things that we feel like it might be time to move forward on, on going to the twenty twenty-one. We also, this is a kind of a background thing, the ISO, which does our fire rating, they also evaluate you on your code and kind of how that process works for you. So it can have an impact on our ISO rating, which right now I think is a seven, or yeah, I think it's a seven. Sorry, I don't, I didn't have it in front of me. But it can impact that and which can impact your fire insurance ratings or your fire insurance costs, although I would say that that has become less and less of a factor for fire insurance over the last decade or so. But it's something to put into consideration. So building inspector Ben Steckity is recommending we move to the twenty twenty-one edition, and he provided you a list as an attachment here of all the changes or the major changes that have happened in that. Some of the big things are about storm shelters and minimum plumbing facilities, which allow for non-gender specific restrooms in certain occupancies, so it's different types of applications there. And then the use of shipping containers, that's one of the things that we've talked about for housing. It was something that we did not have a code language to handle, and so we've, in effect, banned them until recently when we figured out through the code language in this edition that we feel, we feel pretty comfortable that we can allow it now. So if we adopt that, it becomes a part of that for us. So there's also some other things in here that are, are, are good, they move forward. One thing I want to make sure that we aren't doing, I know caused quite a.
I was thinking about.
Yeah, it caused a little bit of a hack, have some problems when we did the last adoption, was the green energy building standards that were part of the twenty twelve. This has not included the green energy standards, so this is not something that we're, we're looking forward to this, in this update, so.
Is there anything similar to that that would be there?
Uh, I mean, there are some.
Create those issues.
There's some energy efficiency things, but it's not, not anything onerous. It's more or less best practice right now for a lot of building stuff, so. We definitely do not want to get in a situation where we're.
No, we ran into that last time too, because there was a building that was going to change possession. And in that, then they had to meet all the new codes, is that still the way it works?
Yeah, that's, that's generally how it works, if you, if you change the occupancy type, so.
If you take the type of ops.
Yeah, if you take it from a storage to a retail space, for example, that you have to meet the retail stuff at that point. And that's been true forever for all the iterations, but there's no extra things with green building standards in this.
But was there also in that question, if the oc, if the ownership changes, do the standards then change?
No, it's.
So if the owner's operating, you know, under, under a business license for, to say it's retail, they sell and another company comes in and is still doing retail, same type of retail, there's no, no changes that the, that the new owners are gonna have to do because the code changed?
Correct. Correct.
Is that what you were asking?
That's really what I wanted to know, yeah. As long as the, the type of, of building or the type of occupancy is what we talked about, it hasn't changed.
Hasn't changed.
It should be good.
Should be good. Because I think that's what we ran into with trying to get some property changed over, but it was, was a different style of, yeah. Where to change this door to a restaurant made a difference. Any other questions regarding that? I guess we're on to city administrators' report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Just want to say we had a great, great celebration at the TC Fiber Carnival that they had out here celebrating the completion of the fiber, fiber optic project. It was a great, great event, it actually worked out really well because Trick or Treat Main Street came in right after that. So they had a ton of kids and then they just sort of flowed right into the Trick or Treat Main Street event, which also went really well, we had hundreds of people here, and I think it, a lot of people came away with a lot of candy, let me just say that. So one of the things that we had there was the electric car, so I wanted to thank KPP for that, they allowed us to have the electric car out. And we had quite a few lookers actually that stopped and take a look and, and just to check out what we had going on with that electric car. So we've also talked a little bit about, we, we've got some chargers coming in, they were ordered a couple of years ago, I think, actually, through KPP, and so we're planning on putting one back here at City Hall. And then we also talked about one at the community plaza, but I don't think we're quite ready for that, so we may end up putting it at the museum. But we've also had some discussions with car dealerships, so the Ford dealership is interested in doing some electric vehicle charging stations, so we're gonna maybe look at doing some kind of partnership with all of our car dealerships in town, not just Ford, but to, to working through KPP to see if we can figure out a way to get that in a reasonable way for them. So electric car charging is coming. Fireworks at the football game, that I think went well, and we were talking about that before the meeting, a couple of people were surprised. And of course, whenever you, you shoot those things out, what did Jesse say, it was forty-five seconds later and he had a phone call? So, you know, it happens, I mean, it happens, but it was a great, great game, we defeated Douglas sixty-two to seven and there was ample opportunity for the pyrotechnics that night. And then the football team's got Chapparrel coming in this Friday, so I don't know if they're shooting fireworks this week or not, but there's.
They have the freedom to do it.
They'll, they'll have the opportunity, so it'll be, it'll be good there. And I want to let you guys know about Peabody, we had some assistance, we sent some folks down there on the twenty-ninth was last Friday. They had an issue with their tower, some valves weren't operating properly, they've got a few issues with staffing too, they haven't been able to hire somebody to work on their, on their water side. And so they got into some, some issues where the pressure dropped in the system, which caused the boil water advisory. We were able to go down there and help them get the valves unstuck in there, and then we were opening up the, some hydrants around town to try to flush the air out of the system and get the chlorine residuals back up. It's an expensive, expensive thing when that type of thing happens, a lot of manpower, a lot of water that gets wasted that way. We also ran into Solana to get the proper testing stuff for them so that they could test their water. I believe if they get everything tested out today and then get the results back, they should be able to remove the boil water warning or advisory either tomorrow or Wednesday, or Wednesday or Thursday, so. Kind of a continuous thing with Peabody, we send, we do help them quite a bit, so we're gonna have a little bit more conversation with them and moving forward. Of course, when we talk about water rates, there also, we have a contract whereby water is them, and so that's one of the conversations we need to have with them about their water rate as well, so that is coming. Sales tax receipts, got the receipts for September, which would include the Arts and Crafts, Arts and Crafts Fair, but I would caution you not to take that as being all of the Arts and Crafts Fair, because a lot of those small time, smaller vendors don't necessarily report on a monthly basis, they sometimes come at the end or on a quarterly basis. So regardless of that, we did pretty well, so they continue to be up about twenty percent from last year, which was a record year for us. So thirty-two percent higher than our rolling five-year average, so we're doing really well in that, we continue to do well with that. And that's a good thing, that's a great thing, actually, so we're, we're doing quite well in that. Also wanted to let you guys know, I'll be on vacation over Thanksgiving, have limited access at the time, but you can always try me. I may or may not be able to get to it, we'll see. We've got plenty of great people who can take care of you at that time. And also wanted to invite you to Gary Andrews', his retirement party, and hopefully the last retirement party we have to do for a while.
You're not ready, Daniel.
Nineteenth, November nineteenth, which is Friday from four to six, Gary's actually still gonna be technically working for us. His last day is, is the eighteenth, but he's taking his vacation for the rest of the year, so he'll, he'll be available technically. But that, that's his, that's his hopefully, hopefully his last day, so he's excited about it, we'll have another party and then we'll be able to put our retirement stuff away for a few months, hopefully. But that's all I have, sir.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Styles? I will say that in regards to helping the city of Peabody and, and Hillsborough, you know, is, is part of, you know, we believe in mutual aid and, you know, we believe in assisting our, our neighbors and, and we do that quite often without a lot of fanfare. You know, in this situation, it's one of those things where it's just becoming a little bit beyond, you know, an, an occasional occurrence, and so that's some of the reasons that Matt's needing to sit down and talk to the, the leadership in Peabody about some of these issues and, and really finding out how we can help them, you know, lessen the need for, for, for mutual aid, you know? That's really what it's about, continuing to help each other. We do, you know, currently on the economic development side, you know, we, we've assisted Peabody because that's part of our network, Kansas, you know, territory and, and, you know, Anthony Roy's been very engaged with their community and helping them, you know, get businesses started and continuing to, to go down there, so that's been a good relationship. And we want to see all cities in Marion County be successful. And, you know, we have a little bit of, of tighter connection with Peabody than we may with some of the other communities, but we want to keep that, keep that tight and, and, you know, keep doing whatever we can to help our neighbors. Okay, Mr. Styles, we're at our second public comment opportunity.
Yes, so if anyone would like to, we've got, we had a few people join us on Zoom, so if you have any public comment, you can unmute yourself and we'll, we'll recognize you and you can speak. I don't.
Okay, all right, well, we will now move on to our council comment section, and we'll start with you, Councilman Gearing?
None today.
Okay, Councilman McCarty? Councilman Driggers?
Nope.
Councilman Lowen?
Nope.
Okay. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Barney.
Have a good evening.